This shouldn't even be an argument, for real. It really shouldn't. Because we got Jonah Calado's son. We got, eh. Hey, hey, Officer Calado. Officer Calado. Hey, this is your son. And this, this morning, this is this morning, this morning, this fucking morning.
Okay, the audience, keep it down. And no curfew. We don't allow curfew here, please, thank you.
Ain't no skin color. We're human. Ain't no skin color. Fuck a skin color. Ain't no, ain't no skin color.
Watch your language, please.
We're human. We're human. And that kid is a, he's a kid. And like they saying, if it was a black person, if it was black people jumping on a white person for doing nothing, saying, please, I'm saying, begging to run away, getting all beat on. What's gonna happen? These people weren't arrested. SVPD lied to the public. SVPD lied to the public. These people weren't arrested. They turned themselves in. You wanna know how I know? Because I got the attackers' information right. They texting me. The attackers texted me. Hayden Davy, Nathan Elkins, Maddox Westfall, texting me. They turned themselves in yesterday. They turned themselves in. They got cited and released. They didn't get arrested like SVPD's saying. Why y'all lying to their public? The fuck?
Please keep it quiet out there.
Hey, I just wanna say, if, if Simi Valley don't do us justice, then the streets is. And that's when, that's when shit gonna get serious, right?
Good evening, Mayor, Council members, and community leaders. My name is Giovanna, and I stand before you as the president of the Black Student Union at Moore Park College. But more importantly, as a voice for young African-American people across this city and county who are hurting right now. On the night of August 1st, 2025, an 18-year-old African-American male, Michael Earl Robinson, was violently assaulted by a group of teenagers in the Regal Cinemas parking lot right here. I was appalled, and my team and I decided to come and speak today. This was a targeted racially motivated attack. Michael was chased from corner to corner, surrounded and hunted down by more than eight individuals. He had no choice but to defend himself with the only thing close to him, which was a chair. In a desperate attempt to survive, he was beaten to the ground. He suffered a chipped tooth, facial swelling, abrasions, even spinal injuries. He was called the N-word multiple times. And most, and the assailants called, joked about beating a black kid. This wasn't just violence, this was hate. And it didn't stop that night. Parents were on social media claiming that these children were protecting themselves from these kids coming into our town. The black kids coming into the town. Even being a police department's, the police officer's son, it's shaking our trust in the system that's supposed to protect us. Imagine being a young black person in Simi Valley. Imagine trying to go to the movies, trying to go to school, trying to go to the grocery store, and wondering if your life is even worth protecting here. Our focus should be on our education. It should be on growing. It should be on becoming better. So as a community, we're calling for a formal public acknowledgement from this city regarding the racial harm inflicted, a meeting with the African-American community to build the American dream, a transparent, independent investigation, protective and restorative measures for young African-American residents, and insurance that this soul, Michael, will not be harmed in this process.
Thank you. Your time is up. Does anyone else on this list? Then you can, she can now take over, if you like. That'll give you more time.
Hi, my name is Sky. And I just wanna say that Mike is my friend, and I've known him for so long. And the fact that somebody can do anything like this to him is crazy, because he is one of the sweetest people I know. Me personally, walking to school, going to school, people have called me so many racial slurs, and just, just living and existing, I have been treated differently for so many times. Going anywhere I go, people are looking at me. I've been called the N-word by white people so many times, just because of my skin color. My friend Mike is, when I say he's one of the sweetest people I know, and for them to be threatening him and saying different things about him is not okay. And the fact that people are just sitting here, and there are people joining in and hitting him and touching him, is just not okay. And the fact, the police was there and seen this and did nothing about this is crazy.
Sorry. We're really only allowed to have you speak if you filled out a speaker's card? So. Okay. And what, give me your name, so I can check it off.
Hello.
This is, is this Isaac Rockmore?
Yes.
Okay, good.
And then we also have Latanda Cromedy.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, um, my name is Isaac Rockmore. I'm also the Black Student Union Treasury President at Moore Park College. I wanna say, um, in 2022, I moved here thinking that Simi Valley was a safe place. I didn't know that the happy face coming here on the freeway meant racist. And also, I have siblings that are also black, and I feel uncomfortable bringing them places out here. Also, I work in the town center, and I've seen it all, with the Trump flags everywhere. It's disgusting. It's very disgusting. I feel very unsafe now working out the town center, because I'm seeing the slurs on the sign, the people that come in. It's just disgusting. And then as for my mother, that doesn't even live in this place, seeing it. That's disturbing. Thank you.
Okay, then the next person's time, we'll start. Are you Laconda?
LaTonda.
Latonda, thank you.
I have a nine, a 10-year-old daughter now. She just turned 10 years old yesterday. Um, it's scary taking her out the house, because she's always like, mommy, why did they say that to you? Or why did they do that to you? And I don't wanna raise her up in a home of like, race. Like, this is because it's black, it's because of this. I don't, it's, it's, it's very hard to explain to her what's going on in the world without putting race into the equation. She's very impressionable. So when I go out and I maneuver in the world, it's like, okay, babe, we have to do it this way. Why, mommy, why? Well, uh, it's, it's, it's just, it's just hard. Because I'm not one, I don't, I'm not, I don't wanna put race into anything, but however, nothing has changed in over.
Have you, do you have a speaker card filled out?
She's giving your time to me?
Yeah, I'm giving, I'm giving my, the rest of my time.
We, we, we can't do that unless she fills out a speaker card, so she can, you can speak, and then she can fill it out right away. Okay?
Okay, I'll do that. My name is Vanaria Jones. I live in the community. My daughter's one that just spoke. I have two of them. At the end of the day, we've been in the Simi Valley Community Town Center on multiple occasions and seen these same teens loitering. Loitering to the point where it makes my daughters feel unsafe. This is a problem like this, like, like many have said previously before me, it's deep-seated and rooted. This is a, this is a problem that Mike, I mean, we've heard on a number of occasions that Mike doesn't live in the community. We go to church in this community. Mike goes to church in this community. That is where my daughters and a lot of the community in here knows Mike from.
Hey, I do have to stop now, the time is up. But thank you. If there's anyone else that has filled out a card?
The eight seconds that are left, 10.
No, we're in the.
There was eight seconds when I turned to look. So can I please have my eight seconds?
The red light was on, so I go by the red light. I'm sorry.
No worries.
So.
We'll be back.
One that's up here. If we have a speaker card for you, you may stay up here. Would the rest of you like to sit down, please? Or you can just stand behind the one person who has a speaker card.
Sorry, he has one.
Okay, so this gentleman gets his two minutes, now two. All right. And I do thank you all for being very respectful. I appreciate that. Okay.
Um, I'm Devon Ware. I live in Simi Valley. I've lived here my whole life. Ever since a young age, I've had to deal with racism in this community, ever since kindergarten. I've had, I've had people tell me to get to the back of the line, because the color of my skin, I cannot stand for that any longer. Mike, Michael Robinson, one of the sweetest kids I know. When he moved out here from Texas, he started playing football with all of us. Sweetest kid out there. And for them to diminish his character, it sickens, it really sickens me. My grandmother, she was in the same room many, many years ago, fighting because she was fighting for the Rodney King trial, right? Now I'm here fighting for Michael Robinson. Michael Robinson's an amazing human being, and he needs justice. He needs justice. The color of my skin should not put a target on my back. Thank you, guys.
Thank you all. Thank you all for coming tonight. To acknowledge this city's racist past. From the Judge Roy Bean Barr with the noose at the end of the counter, just catty corner from City Hall, to the 93 KKK rally permit given by Simi Valley Police Department, so they could protect the KKK, to the Rodney King trial, to the 2018 attack on immigrants here in this council chambers, to the 2020 racist comments made by Councilmember Judge, to the 2020 Simi Valley Black Lives Matter March, where I was the only elected official from Simi Valley to show up, to the weekly MAGA truck rallies, the Confederate flags. And I don't call it Regal Plaza, it is Confederate Plaza. I am tired of seeing the Confederate flags at that plaza, and I will not go to Regal, and I will not shop in that shopping center. And you're hurting business, you're hurting the economics of the city until you acknowledge that. That's my first ask. Acknowledge this city's racist past. I'm not blaming you all for every single thing, but acknowledge it.
Never really experienced racism until I moved to Simi Valley. I grew up where it was basically, you know, you're a good person or you're a bad person. And so moving here to Simi Valley, when I first moved here, I was pulled over frequently, getting off work, slacks, dress shirt, because my taillight was out, but it wasn't out. Various things that, you know, just, just to pull me over. Now, I'm gonna fast forward really quick to a story about my daughter. So I've been out here, my daughter's 16 years old now, just about, about to turn 16. And in elementary, in the fifth grade, she was accosted by a group of about 10 white girls at Garden Grove Elementary, should be documented. I probably could have sued the city of Simi Valley and the Simi Valley Unified School District at that time for negligence. Because I went after the school board, I sent emails, I reached out to the school to find out what was going on, they swept it under the rug. They swept it under the rug. My daughter was jumped by 10 white girls. It should be documented. So I went up to the school, because I handled things a little bit differently. So I went up and I, I saw the parents at graduation, sixth grade graduation, they didn't want any issues. So they pointed me to a parent that lived in a different area. I just so happened to run into that parent at the North Ridge Mall. So when I approached that parent and I said, we have a real issue. Your daughter was one of the, the girls that jumped my daughter on that campus. He pointed back to the other parents, saying that, you know, they live in Simi, they're racist, they're meth heads. I believe it, because we have plenty of that, plenty out here. And so my, my point to that is not to be funny, this, that, and the other, but we have a community, a long-living history of people in Simi Valley being racist. And then I'm talking about on all levels. I'm talking about the lowest of the low, and those that think they're the highest of the high.
Sir, your time is now up. But thank you, I appreciate it.
And I'm the president of Simi Valley High School's Black Student Union. And the alum, and an alum of Township and Valley View. Throughout my schooling in Simi, I have been a victim of racial prejudice, racism, by some of the same perpetrators, Maddox Westfall, Hayden Davy, Jonah Calado, Nathan Elkins, that a young black student named Michael Robinson faced last Friday. Chief Charles Stephen Shorts, an acting sergeant in arms. Racism is an ever-present, and especially present, in the town of Simi Valley. Hate crimes cannot continue to be swept under the rug. On behalf of the black student body of Simi Valley, we demand justice for Michael Robinson and every other person who has been victimized by this mob of white, privileged men with access to the same system in charge of prosecuting them and protecting their victims. In blatant reality, if the circumstances of these events were switched, if one white child, running for his life from a mob of black men, had been chased, beat, and spewed racial slurs at, and that had been recorded, this town would be on fire. Charges need to be filed, arrests need to be made, and no young black man would be safe or protected in his own by officers if it was his doing. A hate crime is defined by the Department of Justice as a crime motivated by bias against race, color, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, or disability. This was a hate crime, a crime motivated by bias against race. Emmett Till's mother left the casket open to let the world see what they did to his boy, her boy. The world has seen what they've done to this boy, and we now demand action. Martin Luther King and Malcolm X were both civil rights pioneers for very different ways. Choose which one you want. The casket is open, it's your move.
I was here last week in support of law enforcement, but today I am ashamed of the Simi Valley Police Department. What I saw on social media broke my heart. A gang of teens viciously beating a black boy and screaming the N-word, as they brutally punched and kicked him. They hit him with a chair and they put him into a trash can. This is unacceptable. Jonah Calado is Officer Calado's son, and according to the video, he thinks he's protected by the Simi Valley Police Department. He's on camera leaning on a police cruiser that same night, saying it's a joke. Two of the boys have criminal records. Why were these hooligans not arrested immediately? Why did it take two days to arrest them? I plead with you to urge the DA to file hate crime charges. Also, I want to say that this behavior is learned at home. Sergeant Calado, shame on you.
Please keep the clapping to a minimum, so that the speaker has all of their time. Thank you.
Please, guys, urge the Ventura County District Attorney to file hate crime charges. He does not have a good record of filing hate crime, or attaching hate crime charges to violent incidents. I will give you one example. A gentleman by the name of Paul was murdered on the corner of Westlake Boulevard and Thousand Oaks about two years ago by a gentleman who screamed pro, um, pro-Palestine and hit him in the head with a megaphone. The DA was assuring our community that he was going to attach hate crime charges, which he did not. I do not want to see this happen again. Hate crime charges need to be put on these individuals. I will not use the word people or gentlemen. And as I said, parenting starts at home. This is a learned behavior.
And just hearing about what happened at Regal sounded like something that was 100 years ago, but it happened three days ago. I deserve to feel safe in my city. Mike was just a friend of mine. This could have happened to me. And, and all those thugs, Jonah Calado, Hayden Davy, Maddox Westfall, Nathan Elkins, and Harper Trejos were let to go freely. Had they been black, they might have been shot or arrested instantly. Those boys committed a hate crime. One of the worst ones I've ever witnessed in my life. And they were allowed to go freely, and then you have the, the police make a statement, a lie, saying they arrested four juveniles. They only cited three, and they were let go freely right that way. Mm-hmm. And they turned themselves in. And Jonah Calado, the son of Officer Calado, is allowed to just go freely? And he said he would do it again. He has no remorse. Absolutely none. Those boys, I wouldn't even call them boys, they're thugs, they're monsters. Evil. Such evil people. And I can't believe we have the city just not protect us, no justice. Sad.
I'm extremely disappointed in the Simi Valley Police Department on this matter for their lack of urgency and their extreme leniency. It's really disheartening and shameful. Officer Calado also needs to be held accountable, as he has failed as a father for Jonah and failed as a protector for the community. As for the aggressors, they have put themselves in a position where they have limited opportunities to redeem themselves. To the figures with actual authority, get these aggressors off the streets, as they've proved, they've proven to be nothing but unremorseful. And if you give them the opportunity to be on the street again, then they will reoffend. And this, this is a hate crime. They should be persecuted and charged with a hate crime, because this is just unacceptable. In the reports, context needs to be given and not sugarcoated. Lying by omission is still lying. And I'm asking by trans, I'm asking for transparency, and I'm asking for action to be taken. And I'm not asking for excuses, because at the end of the day, this should be a simple, actions have consequences, but where are the consequences? For Michael and the other victims, I hope you get the justice that you deserve. This is, this will never be okay.
And I am here to let the city of Simi Valley know that this will not be tolerated. And I wanna echo the same things that the previous people have said. My, my time I wanna, I wanna give talking about racism and racist. Racism is taught in the home. So whoever the parents of these kids are, you are raising them that way. And I'm telling you that reason, because I have kids of my own. They would not dare say some shit like this or get involved in it. So that's where, so that's where racism starts in the home. We're not tricking anybody. So at the age of these kids, it's embedded in them. It runs through their veins, the hatred and the racism. And let me tell you about racists. What, what we saw on that video was exactly how racists act. They always come in groups. They're too chicken shit to fight by themselves. How many black people do you want us to bring to Simi Valley to make this fair? And what we saw, what we saw, what we saw on that video is strictly a hate crime. And Ventura County has limitations and laws and rules around hate crimes. This one qualifies as one. So if it's not a hate crime filed, you're not doing your job. And we don't wanna hear those excuses in that conversation about working with the PD. Let's see, let's see it happen.
Thank you, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I have been harassed by these juveniles as well. And it is sad to see the fact that the police department failed to handle my case, and something like what happened to Michael could have been prevented if the law enforcement in this town handled my case the way that they should have, and held these juveniles accountable to their actions. I am not the first, and sadly, I was not the last that these children have harassed. It got to the point where they have assaulted myself, my home, and my service animal, to the point where I had to retire my service animal at three years old. I don't have him here with me today, because he can't do his job because of these animals. The police department, um, several times when I had continued to be harassed after this incident, they gang stalked, these juveniles gang stalked me at my work. And they also threatened my life several instances afterwards. I brought it to the police department's attention on multiple occasions. I was told that they were involved in something bigger, and they didn't need to obtain their names, because they knew who they were. They also told me that these kids are all bark and no bite. They're bite now, aren't they? So if the police department did their jobs, none of this would have happened. And it is sad to say that this has been going on for years. And I am terrified that I will continue to be harassed by having the courage to speak up.
As of right now, three of the attackers responsible for the hate crime, which it is a hate crime, no one can tell me different, only one have been cited and released while letting others that were responsible get away. We have, we have videos from multiple angles, videos of them saying that they would do it again, along with other threats of violence. I'm, I don't know about the rest of you, but I'm terrified for my peers and angry for the victims in this situation. Why is one of the attacker's dads a cop on the force, and why he, why has he had no repercussion so far? When he has a history of this harassment and deplorable behavior? Hayden Davy, Maddox Westfall, Harper Trejos, Nathan Elkins, Jonah Calado, the son of the cop on your police department, who has said he would do it again, all of the attackers, none of which have been arrested again. They have smashed kids' heads into the concrete multiple times, spewing racist remarks and saying they rule the town. And you have done nothing but support that comment by allowing these violent criminals loose. In the videos, it clearly shows that it was a one versus nine kids, which the group of kids started. We demand transparency and justice.
Most of us are here because a hate crime was delivered a citation. That's unacceptable and racist. But let's be honest, at least through my entire 32-year-old life, the performance of this entire city government has been unacceptable and racist. Mike Judge here is famous for his antics online from 2020. Wanna Google it, Septic Tank Mike Judge, it's a fun one. Their reputation for a reason. When the police protect their own and their racist kids aren't punished, the folks on this council in front of you are responsible for their accountability. In the end, we demand it, because in the end, the people who are accountable for this are you, city council. The tide of justice might be slow, you might be elected for 20 years before it catches up to you, but at the very least, your legacy will remember you as for what you didn't do.
Uh, two weeks ago, I was here advocating for my Hispanic friends and neighbors. Today, I'm here advocating for my black friends and neighbors. This is a constant issue, and we need to get ahead of it, instead of reacting to it, right? We, we really wanna get an agenda item for how we deal with ICE raids going forward, and we want justice for Mike, and that's it.
A pregnant woman attacked, a gun pointed at a member of the LGBTQ community, a Palestinian man dragged out of his home by police, and a black teenager beat while a group of 30 white teens watch. What do all of these things have in common? They've all happened in your city in the last three months. Mayor Kavanaugh, shame on you for not mentioning that this was a hate crime in your opening statement. For not failing to continue, continue to fail to condemn racism in this city for as long as you've sat on the dais. And Mayor Pro Tem Judge, not sure if you're awake right now, but we have not forgotten your racist and Islamophobic remarks. And we, the people, know that you're eyeing that, eyeing that mayoral seat. And we, the people, will not allow you to have it. I ask you, Councilmember Ayala, you're new here. You have the opportunity to convince your fellow council members to condemn racism in this city. City Attorney Algeria Ford, your website touts that you were a civil rights attorney in the past. Use that knowledge and advise your council members to condemn the racism in this city, and to advise the DA that this was a hate crime and to move accordingly. We, the people, will not let you forget.
I am a mother of white children, and I would never, well, I would hope to God my kids would never say racist shit like was said, and a hate crime, be a part of a hate crime. But for those that were saying that the parents do the best they can, I'm gonna read a message from Jonah's mom, because this is, this is a white mother defending her racist son, which means she is also racist. All I'm gonna, all I'm gonna say to all of you who are blaming this on the parents, you have no idea what happened. These kids started it with our, our children. My child is far from racist. Oh. Okay, it's a different mother, it's a different racist child's mother. So, um, let's just say that when one of the kids had their mother say this, it is a parent defending their racist child. The, these children are protecting themselves from these kids coming into our town, causing trouble with other children who live here. So instead of just riding on what you see, listen to the whole picture. They are not racist. They are not fighters. They are defending themselves exactly the way they should be. That is racism. This city has been racist for decades. I remember as a child, when Rodney King was beaten, the, the trial was moved here, because we knew that this city would defend the cops. This is classic white supremacy. And anybody who is not prioritizing this as a hate crime and justice for Michael is complicit in white supremacy. Thank you.
I'm here to represent the Moore Park College football team. We don't stand for this, we don't stand for racism. Our coaches have instilled into us that this is unacceptable for anybody. We shouldn't be hating, slandering, disrespecting, based off of color. That's God-given, we are all God's people, we are supposed to live in harmony. This is pain to the community, pain to the families that we don't need to see. It's pain all around, and it's negative energy in the city. I live in Moore Park, right down the street. We don't need this spreading. This is hate. It spreads like wildfire, and we know that. Coaches say this word that they were using is the most demeaning and hateful word that we can use against. we can use against colored people. We need to be better. We need to work against this. We need justice, something that we don't get often. And it pains me to see justice not be given. So today, take this word and think about it. It's unacceptable. It really is. This is coming from a community that believes this is unacceptable and we ban it.
Mike Robinson has actually been on my show because he has fought very hard to move away from Texas and change his life and give his life to the Lord. I trust him with my children who are young. He has helped me around my house. He has always called me Miss Raina. And I just want to thank the chief for allowing me to help me to speak to you because I want to speak about Mike's character. Mike loves God and he loves everyone he comes in contact with. He's not a gang banger. And when I called him when I found out what happened, I said, what happened? Did you get in an argument with them? His words were me, to me were, no, Miss Raina, they were drunk. They were looking for a fight. They turned the corner, they came back. And when they came back around, I said, we better get out of here, which shows he utilized wisdom. He said they chased him. So I have an issue, a couple of issues with this as I've found out since then, uh, that these kids have been terrorizing many races and ages of people. I have an issue with them underage drinking. I feel like that's a huge problem that yes, their parents probably do know about because I know about my children and what they're getting into. If you're paying attention, which you should be, all the parents in here. And it seems that they have no remorse and I was crying in here because to know that this morning that that young man said that he would murder my nephew, he's like my nephew. Hearing that is not okay. Shows there's no remorse. So I pray to God that we don't repeat what happened with Rodney King. I pray to God, the only one who's in charge of all of this, that you all will make sure that you stand against what happened on Friday night as he left church and got beat up that night.